I was asleep, it's literally half past 8 to 9 and someone called me like leaving from Takealot outside Morning, I'm good, how are you? I was asleep in my bed, thank you so much, yes, thank you, you too I feel so embarrassed because why am I sleepy at this time? Okay, now this was a good wake up call for me to wake up actually So Takealot made a mistake and took my my package to a wrong, to a wrong facility so then they had to reschedule and probably these are the first orders that are out in the morning and they said in evil apologizing that sorry we couldn't deliver your parcel on the date you said you wanted luckily I had someone to install me with a product and stuff, so these are basically, this is installation kit yeah, so Tim, it's him Why was I sleeping at this time? I feel so embarrassed because now the sky, I know I have to, sorry, my bad, I was sleeping crazy Morning guys, I have a, we have pictures that we have to shoot for a podcast and that's where I'm going right now I'm slightly late and these things wanna make me late because I don't, I don't know where I put the lid anyways Photoshop done, I had a photo shoot because we are releasing a new podcast soon so we had to get a few pictures sorted out What's happening? Who is moving out? I definitely look like a mess but we're sleeping this weave is slightly gonna make me go insane, so on that note the thing is, I have a band here, you hear that? I have a band and I feel like my head is just being compressed okay, it's not bad, like the pain is variable but like, no, I'm not used to this, like this is literally my first weave so I need to sleep in this, this silk bonnet and then this to hold this from shifting because I'll be sleeping somehow, I don't even understand how I'll be sleeping and these things, this, this actually nowhere to be found, yesterday I slept with this one and this, it stayed all night I can't find the pink, pink one I don't find the pink one I'm looking for but this one is still gonna get the job done because it's a bonnet anyways Oh my gosh! Hello, I'm crying, thank you so much I'm done ordering, I'm literally so done ordering because cannot be ordering so much, I've been ordering, no this is, in here there is a shampoo and there's a, yeah, a shampoo and a shirt and perhaps something straight gel, whatever but yeah, we're done with deliveries I won't be ordering online anymore because already I look like I'm rich, okay, probably I am but Where's the girl? This is the shampoo oh, in this, why is it happening? Really? Okay, this is maybe Morning guys, my eyes are so puffy, I don't wanna talk, I'm not in the mood of talking I am going to the library today because I need to push certain stuff, I have an assignment due to yous tomorrow so I need to go cover that, uncover certain stuff um, but yeah, I'm sorry, I won't be epping today, like I had the worst night ever my eyes are literally still so puffy from the crying life, yeah, okay There is absolutely no network at all if that board driver wanted to steal me, literally today was his time because the app is literally down, we don't know if it's the app or network but on that note, I am going to the garage to get some energy drink so that I can actually walk in, so Can this weekend actually, I'm at the library and my laptop has no battery I'm on 35% this is my laptop 18 What must happen when there's no electricity guys? What a waste of my day everybody comes to me in my days, you guys get so creative I literally need the internet bro Why am I laughing? I got, I bought data with so much money, I literally spent over 200 in like 10 minutes buying data now that I'm here, there is no electricity And as I don't wanna talk to you, I'm literally not in the mood to be fighting, yesterday was a nightmare for me, so I need to regroup today My eyes are even so much better, I cried for like 30, 45 minutes to an hour Yesterday was wild, literally wild Now this is testing my patience because why isn't the electricity at the library? I think it's literally next door, it's a clinic and I'm thinking the sound that I'm hearing is the generator and there's no closer library or no besides this one this one is literally closest to home and that's where my boat is like 5 minutes away I'm crashing out, I'm literally, like my mood is gone This thing is literally now getting so heavy, it's quite How I look is not my problem at this point This has to be submitted tomorrow, last minute things, last minute things, I hate them, everything Let's try to log in and I won't be filming because it's my, my, my battery, so I'm gonna save it because if I don't save battery, how am I gonna get home? My user taxi My user taxi I don't have money for taxi There's no ATM I left my card Yo, bro, what the heck is going on? Literally if I'm on 10% and this electricity is not back, I'm wearing back home to be safe, I'm literally on 35% Damn The lights are back on Productive day it's been, literally, now we can go back home Yeah We home Good morning guys, I installed this around 11pm is today and the third day today, I have an assignment that I need to go submit, like I'm dropping off the assignment and a friend of mine asked me to accompany her to Malaf Africa because she has to sign some papers so literally after submitting, I'm 17, we're going to Malaf Africa I don't even know how far the distance is but yeah we're going to Malaf Africa and then yeah, gets there, she does her thing, probably take a few pictures that's if I feel good and then yeah, come back home, that's my third day, then tomorrow is a Friday I think Friday morning, we leaving for KZ and neutral, but yeah Did I eat with the install guys? I think I did, but just not make sure It's literally not make sure, I just feel like this side is way higher up here Just do it for another day I'm not a, I do, I want to eat his knee but then I'm also like, I clean installers also kit, so why not? That's just my two cents, so on that note I didn't do anything yet today, like since I woke up so I'll fix it after I'm done bathing, so I'm gonna bathe now I think it's, it's half past 5 in the morning, so I'm gonna bathe then sort myself out, try to figure out I bet, sort out everything and try to figure out, but I'm gonna wait and then after bathing, I know for more energized, for now, I don't wanna sleep actually because for the first time, man, we're very happy I don't wanna sleep actually, like I'm literally so good I slept around half past 12 I slept around half past 12 so probably I have four, five first hours of sleep, yeah, 5 hours of sleep so I, I'm actually good with that 5 hours, I don't know, I feel more energized when I sleep less than when I sleep the 8 hours, so okay, now I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish, bye guys Can I connect to the person?
Yeah
You wanna come with me? Super place Oh my gosh
Am I a baby?
Definitely I feel like a mom She's nice This is, this is nice There's not a bed at all At all At all. Guys, I am from Exclusive Books. Please buy me books for my birthday, please, please. I'm gonna post it here, one, two, three. I need those books, guys. Thanks. Bro, I just passed empty. Crazy. Today was the best day of my life. Guys, I played right there. And I enjoyed myself. I look, you wanna go in here? No, the security is almost tight.
And it makes me through the tracks.
How many tracks are this? I'm drinking Ayuani flat.
Oh, MSC.
I'm gonna go.